Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas, Mayor and Commissioner meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting. And this is February the 25th, 2019. And the next thing on our agenda is the invocation. Commissioner Olivia Pearson is going to lead us through that.
Yes, sir. Let me see if we can get Ms. Georgia Henderson to do our prayer for us tonight.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We give you praise and honor which you so deserve, oh God. We pray God bless us over our mayor and commission tonight as they govern and make decisions for the betterment of this community in which we live. Please continue to bless all directors and all the citizens of this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson.
You're welcome.
Minister Henderson.
Next on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. And as always, we're going to be led by the Coffey County Navy Junior ROTC. And tonight, representing the ROTC is Ensign Marino. If you would, please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You may be seated. Next on the agenda is the approval of the order of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the items placed on the consent agenda. As always, we'll turn that over to our city manager, Mr. Charlie Davis, and he'll read off what we have there.
Mayor Commission, we have one item from the work session on the consent agenda, and that's item one, the approval of the February 9th, 11th, 18 minutes.
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is work session. Items brought forward. Mr. City Manager.
We have two items being brought forward. The first item is item three from the work session, tab B, is to discuss the conflict of interest requirements for 2019 CDBG grant application process. Commissioner, Community Development Director Georgia Henderson.
Good evening.
Good evening. The recommendation is to seek declaration for mayor and commission that there are no conflicts of interest for the proposed target map area for the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Application.
Okay. Want to come in?
Oh, for the motion. Oh, wait a minute. So I don't have anybody in that area. Are we confirming that if there's relatives in that area right now?
Right. I'm sorry. The Regional Commission would like for each one of you to confirm that you don't have, for the public records, keeping of it, any conflicts, and then you can vote to declare that there are none.
Oh, okay. Thank you. To my knowledge, I have no relatives in that area.
Commissioner Moore?
I don't have any.
Commissioner McNeil?
To my knowledge, I don't have any either.
Commissioner Taylor?
Don't have any.
Commissioner Dern?
Don't have any.
And that disclaimer, to the best of my knowledge, I don't have any. So at this time, we will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next item being brought forward is the first reading of the rezoning application for 786 Thompson Drive. That'll be drawn by the city attorney.
Okay, this will be the first reading for 786 Thompson Drive, M2 Industrial to M1 Industrial. This will be the first reading. We'll have a second reading and a public hearing on March the 11th. Bill ordained by the Mayor Board of Commissions of the City of Douglas, Georgia, hereby ordained by authorities same form and after national authorities, which is on what's the City of Douglas, Georgia, adopted by Mayor Board of Commissions of the City of Douglas, Georgia, on June 30, 1993, as amended in the Compensate Plan of the City of Douglas, Georgia, adopted by Mayor Board of Commissions of the City of Douglas, Georgia, on October 8, 2007, as amended. And stands amended as follows. False drive track and land shall hereafter be zone M1 Industrial. All that tractor parts for land lying since the beginning of the City of Douglas, landlot number 130 and six landings for Coffey County, Georgia, being more detailed according as follows, being all a tract 2D consisting of 1.02 acres, as shown and depicted on certain plat prepared by statewide surveying company dated May 10, 2011, recorded in plat book 110, page 68B, in public rest of Coffey County, Georgia, above, reports and property obtained by Douglas Coffey County Industrial Authority, in that certain instrument dated November 17, 1987, recorded in D book 272, page 294, in the public rest of Coffey County, Georgia, often read first time at the regular meeting of Mayor Board of Commissions of the City of Douglas, Georgia, on February 25th, 2019. And like I said, we'll have a public hearing, a second reading on March the 11th. Thank you. City Mayor, that's it?
No, that's all the items from the work session, Mayor.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our staff comments.
Just have a few announcements. The Parks and Recreation Department, right now, they're in spring registration for spring ceramics and also regular registration for the tract program. So if anyone would like to sign up for the programs, and I don't know if we've announced this, but Parks and Recreation also have their catalog of programs for the 2019 year. I think that's in a downloadable file on our website for the convenience of parents or guardians to pick that up, or they can stop by the Parks and Recreation Office for a copy. But be sure to pick up one or go by to see what spring programs are being offered. Also during the month of March, we have two junk residential drop-off days coming up. That will be March the 2nd and March the 16th, from 8:30 until 12 noon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to remind you, we got a utility committee and a commission after the regular meeting tonight.
Okay. Thank you. So at this point, we are at our staff comments. Commissioner Pearson, are you ready, maybe, to explain our display?
Oh, yes, sir. I am. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If it's okay with you, though, I'll do the last thing that I say.
Okay.
But first, I just want to say to everyone that on this past Saturday, I had an opportunity to attend Post 515 Ladies Auxiliary 32nd Year Anniversary. And it was very, very nice. The keynote speaker for the event was Ms. Valerie DeBro, who is the first Vice President for the Department of Georgia Ladies Auxiliary. And her husband, Lesty DeBro, he introduced her, and he is the Department of Georgia Adjutant for American Legion. And they are two very fine people. I had a chance to meet them, and the Ladies Auxiliary Anniversary was very, very nice. Wish more people could have came out, and they had some great food. Also pertaining to the American Legion, I want to just remind everyone about the display that is currently here in Douglas, Georgia, over at our library, Satilla Library. And it's a display concerning former Congressman John Gibson, I think that's his name.
Sure.
And he is responsible for what's called the Great Legislation, and it's also known as the GI Bill. So in your spare time, please go over there and visit that. It's a great display. And he's from Douglas, Georgia, so we are very, very proud of that fact. He convinced the other ones when he got there to vote unanimously to get that GI Bill to become official, which helps veterans to go to school, various things, education acts just does a lot to help veterans and their families. Let's see. On March the 12th, to those of you all who don't know, I'd just like to say that my deacon of my church, Sidney Keith Harrow, who is the son of former City Commissioner Elijah Harrow, he will be being recognized for Mortuary of the Year. So March the 12th, that's going to be at Young's Chapel Baptist Church. So tickets are $25. If you all would like to attend, y'all can contact Sidney Harrow or any of his family members for a ticket. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, the display, I'd just like to say, in recognition of Black History Month, I wanted to bring some of my books that I have at home. I have hundreds of books at home, not just Black History books, but all kinds of books. You see there, I have also a book on Clinton, Bill Clinton, as well as the George Bush Dynasty, their family dynasty. But also, I have plenty, plenty, plenty of African-American books. And I brought these because, not just because it's Black History Month, but I just want to take this time to encourage our young people to get in the habit of reading. I'm a fun person of reading, always have been. I really wish we could get a young adult book reading club going, but I love books, I love reading, and that's just some of mine that I have on display, that I brought from home, that I wanted to share with mayor and council in recognition of Black History Month. There's also some Black History Weekly Planners and yearly calendars that I have, puzzle of President Obama and his wife, but just a lot of various things that are... Some of the books are for reading, but some of the other items, like the planners, weekly planners or what have you, they're actually for sale through African-American Expressions. So I just wanted to share that with my colleagues. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Just glad to see everyone and glad to be out and around, and we appreciate everybody attending.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. We are, as many of you know, we have the opportunity Sunday, March 10th, to again recognize daylight savings time, and so we'll be adjusting our clocks and springing forward at that time. So we'll have another hour of daylight to clean our yards and take our stuff to the residential junk drop-off. That is so hard to say. Junk drop-off.
It is.
I've called it everything but that in the past, but, you know, I encourage folks to take pride in our community. And I see so many folks who congratulate us on a beautiful town. They pass through here, they enjoy our restaurants and our scenery and our, you know, exhibits and our state, you know, our parks. And so I just, again, springtime is a beautiful time, and I hope we get to, you know, have visitors enjoy our city for many, many years to come. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor? Thank you, Mayor. Main thing I want to talk about is grass cutting.
See there? So much.
Yeah, we have been getting a lot of rain, and the yards, our yards and things, need to kind of tighten them up. Although, although there's not no grass, there's plenty of weeds in the yard, but yet still, we need to maintain them, so we never know who is looking, you know, at our city. And that's influence on when people come through, you know, making sure our yards are in top shape, do the best we can. Mike's our citizen. Please, please, let's get out there and make them look beautiful. Ms. Sidney, Commissioner Sidney had already stated that daylight saving time is coming, so that'd give us another extra hour to get out there and get those yards in top shape, you know. This is Black History Month. I want to take time out to honor two people that, you know, I think so whole locks about. I don't have much. It's just straight out of my heart, you know, everything. Commissioner Pearson, I would like to say thank you for serving on the City Commission for over 20 years plus, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
City Manager, I would like to say...
Mayor?
Mayor. Not your job.
Mayor, prepare a little better.
City Mayor, I would like to say thank you for serving...
Thank you.
...as Mayor of the City of Douglas for two terms. A lot of times, we don't recognize our own...
That's right.
But we among each other, and I think it would be profit to just say thank you all for y'all's service, for what y'all have did for the City of Douglas. Not only you all, but everybody just here, you know?
Yes.
Because it take all of us to make it happen, you know, everything.
That's right.
Black, white, whatever, you know, everything. It's been the whole night, it take us all. But this, you guys have been here a minute, you know? I'd just like to say thank you.
Oh, my goodness.
No. No, we got salute out there. And y'all both got that salute right.
Thank you.
Supposed to be saluting in the building.
Oh, I'll go to shit.
I like that. Is that right?
It's hard to come down to something like that. But good evening, everyone. We thank you all for your service and serving here at the City of Douglas. And also, the other week ago, I attended a health fair at High Tower Memorial Temple. When I got in there, Ms. Celestine Williams was talking and everything, and it was a lot of knowledge at the health fair at High Tower Memorial Temple, where the district mother, Mother Bob Jean Taylor, put on a great health fair, and it was great information. She had a sit-up on the campus of High Tower Memorial Temple. She had blood pressure checks, everything, even a meal for the people, and, you know, that was a great thing, and, you know, and I, my hats go out towards you, Mother Taylor, towards that. And also, I would like to say towards all of the citizens of the City of Douglas, please take advantage of the junk drop-off for, that's every second and fourth Saturday. Please take advantage of it, because I had a couple of citizens ask me, when do the city come by and pick up the sofas, the mattresses and stuff? And I told them, I said, "We don't pick up sofas, mattresses and stuff, but we have junk off, junk drop-off at the pole yard over there, and you can drop your stuff off on second Saturdays and fourth Saturdays." So we ask every citizen, take advantage of that opportunity. I mean, just load your trucks up, take your stuff home.
Don't cost you nothing.
Don't cost you nothing. And this is Black History Month, and last, last time, I honored Mr. Street, Mr. Archer Street, but I want to honor another citizen, another citizen of the City of Douglas. He was an African-American minor, I mean, league baseball bat boy, and he was the youngest person to participate in professional baseball game on July the 19th, 1952. He was inserted into the game for Fisher Pioneers in Georgia State League at the age of 15. The Pioneers was left behind to the State Bird Pirates, 13 to 0. Heading into the eighth inning, the crowd started chatting to the club manager, which was Mr. Charlie, Mr. Charlie Range Way, to put in the bat boy. And the bat boy later, the bat boy later went in to score, and he began to be the youngest player of that league at that time. Later in the summer, he went to work for the semi-pro Fisher Lucky Stars, appearing in a few games. And also, he had athletic career, however, was cut and off shrug when he broken his collarbone, suffering in college. After graduating, he went to become an electrical technician and moved to Douglas, Georgia, where he became only the third African-American hired to the city's police force. And he later was appointed Deputy Sheriff, a post he had held until retiring in 1998. And today, I'd like to give honor to Mr. Joe Relliver, and my hats go out to him today, and that's representing our Black History.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Got one more. Also, I'd like to congratulate my wife. She came here first place. They had the 5K run at Coffey Region. Get aged. Get aged. Congratulations, you know, in your age bracket. Yes.
25 to 35.
You're not going to go there.
Yes, Mayor. I want to double back here just a moment also. Something important that I forgot to mention again, this has to do with quality of life here in Douglas, Georgia. I attended one of these, and I missed the first one. I attended one last month, and it was wonderful, and I encourage everybody to come downtown this Friday night for First Friday. There is something for everybody. Bring your children. It's good family entertainment. There will be music, food, all in the heart of downtown Douglas. The merchants will be staying open late. We have four different musicians. We have Chelsea Tanner, Dave Griffin, Evy Woodward, and Gabe Gonzalez. All will be performing that night. So the fun starts at 5 o'clock, and we'll go on till 8 or until the last song's played, I guess. So, but the music was great, and, yeah, we had a little sprinkle last time that put a little bit of a damper on it, but still had a good turnout, and you'll just be, I think you'll be very impressed. Thank you again, Mayor.
Uh, Mayor, excuse me, I'd like to...
We're all doubling back.
Going back, you're going to do that?
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Want to say that the first lady commissioner of the City of Douglas passed away this past weekend, Ms. Lori Childery, and she served a portion of one term, and I don't know why, but she didn't complete the term, but she didn't, but she passed away at age 77 this past weekend, and we want to send our sympathy to her children. And she, she went to First Baptist Church and had her funeral there, and she was buried by her husband, Boogie Childery, at the city cemetery, and send our sympathy to the family. That's all, Mayor.
One more thing. Ms. Henderson, if you don't mind, I had a couple of people that called me. Can you, they wanted to know how, there's different musicians, different singers and stuff. They wanted to know how can they, who do they contact into getting on to the First Friday stuff and everything? So I was going to get with you about that earlier, but I know you could give more information about it.
The head organizer for that is Dave Hughes, who is now the Main Street Manager under the Chamber. They can call 384-1873.
So when they view it on the tape, they can look at, you know, the citizens and stuff. So that's why I asked you to come up and do that.
The musician last time was a very, very talented country music singer, a black gentleman named Danny Dawson, and did a great job. He was, he was actually the gentleman who sang the National Anthem at the, at Governor Kemp's inauguration, so, and he's from this area, Douglas and Pearson, so he sang at First Friday last time, did a great job.
Yeah, but I just had a lot of local citizens that asked, how do they get on it? So I said, did I get heard?
Dave Hughes, Dave Hughes, that's for sure.
Read it off. She just said that.
Yeah.
And I got her to read it off, so when they go back and view the tape, they can, you know, the meeting, they can get that information and everything.
Good. I was going to talk about Ms. Childery. Mr., well, Commissioner Moore has already gave a synopsis of this, and of course, as the mayor and commission, our sympathy goes out to the family of Ms. Childery. Also, you would notice that we're minus one. Commissioner Gowen is not feeling well, so he was unable to attend because of illness. You know, in honor of Black History, one of the things that I used to teach my daughters about Black History is how we were all interlaced, and sometimes, we only focus on the, that, what the blacks actually accomplished, and that's fine. Some of the times, we need to be very mindful of individuals that actually served as catalyst for us to be able to enjoy what we enjoy. One of the things is, I always tell individuals, the Emancipation Proclamation, when it was signed for slaves to be free, there were no black elected officials in Congress. There were none. So a group of white men, I think it was all 100% women, men at the time, thought that Black Americans should no longer be recognized, I believe it's three-fifths of a citizen, that they should be a citizen and they should be free. So I'm always mindful of that, and I've expressed this here before. One of the greatest organizations that the Black community has and has won numerous trials at the Supreme Court of this land, the NAACP, one of its co-founders is a white woman. Also, I sit there and I used to tell my children, we've all heard of the Freedom Riders. The Freedom Riders were a bunch of kids, young adults, and that's one of the things that's always perplexing to me, when individuals talk about, well, our youth doing this and our youth doing this. Remember, it was the youth that really put a lot of energy behind the Civil Rights Movement, the Freedom Riders, the protests, things like that. Our youth actually was the catalyst for that. My other thing is that I learned Commissioner Pearson talked about the display about the GI Bill. I was really intrigued because I didn't know this, first of all. I did not know this, is that the young man, Congressman John Strickland Gibson, didn't know he was a native of Georgia, of Douglas. But the GI Bill, they say it's the greatest legislation. The GI Bill gave a poor individual an opportunity to go to college and gave that individual the opportunity to climb up into the middle class. He is famous for the GI Bill.
That's true.
But guess what portion he's famous for? The original GI Bill was not going to be awarded to Black veterans.
Right.
And he stood on the ground on the premise that if you served, your country should take care of you. So it was going to be a 3-3 vote. He left Douglas, I think they said they held up the airplane for him for three hours. He gets on the flight, flies up there, and he says, at the conclusion of this vote, he was going to hold a massive press conference and tell everybody how everybody voted, that we put more value on a white veteran than we did a Black veteran. And that wasn't right. We see veterans as veterans. And he was able to change the minds of the individuals on that council, and it was a unanimous vote. Now just think about that. This white guy stood in the gateway for African-Americans to be able to enjoy the GI Bill. So one of the things I always try to get individuals to understand is that we're all interlaced. My freedom is just as important as anybody. Me being a man means that I'm just as important as anybody. And through legislation, those things came about, but it was a little bit of everybody that participated in that. And I know one of the most graphic things that I displayed to my daughters was Bloody Sunday. And I had to make sure that she, my oldest daughter, Kiara, understood what the significance of that was. And I tell individuals all the time, let me not say tell, let me suggest to you, sit down, know your history, have a conversation with your children, talk about how things used to be and how they are now, and how did we get to this point? Because we have a lot of privileges and rights that some people fought for and never got an opportunity to enjoy. got an opportunity to enjoy. And I say this right here, and I'm gonna be quiet. Everything that Mr. Roper, Commissioner Roper, you know, he's a commissioner, but he was elevated to Mr. Roper. You know what I mean? Mr. Roper and NAACP did enormous work. But I benefited by being the first African-American mayor to sit here. I did not remove any trees, grind any stumps, clear out the roadway, pave that road, stripe that road. I just jumped on the road and went to ride. With Mr. Roper and his generation labor, so I could benefit. And we must be mindful of that. Individuals say, oh, I don't vote. That's the craziest thing I ever heard of. That's the craziest thing I ever heard of. I don't care if they vote to paint every school bus pink, I'm going to vote. I'm going to vote. And I make sure that my children vote. But let me tell you how that works. Grab Kiara, Destiny, barely walking, we go to Central Square. What we doing, Dad? We going to vote. All right, here we go. Read that. Who we vote for? This person. Dad, I don't like that person. You don't know that person. You know what I mean? Well, what about this amendment? Well, this amendment is, it gives veterans certain rights. All right, we don't vote against veterans in my house, because that's what I taught them. We try to give all veterans all the opportunities that we could actually give them. So sit down and talk with your children about their history.
That's right.
My Aunt Hazel, I think she the queen of Rat Road. That woman know more stuff about Rat Road than you can shake stick at. But it's good to know that. It's good to know that. What happens when Aunt Hazel passes? Who has that knowledge? Who has that knowledge about your family? What happened in your family?
That's true.
Who has that knowledge? I think that in the Black families, we need to be mindful of our family's history. It's always entertaining when we have a family reunion and my Uncle Mark gets to talking. Uncle Mark, I'm like, golly, how old were you, dude? I was like, eight. And he could just start telling you things. My Aunt Hazel say, well, so-and-so used to be there, so-and-so used to be there, so-and-so used to be there. Why do I tell you this? That history is important. And you need to be able to recognize that history is important. But guess what? You see these books right here? If you've never opened a book, your mindset will stay the same. If you never have a conversation with somebody that believes differently from you, your mind will stay the same. One of the greatest classes I had in college was Professor Jolly. And to get 100, he would pick a topic, and you would have to argue for or against that. And we argued for two hours. At the conclusion of the two hours, you got a grade, zero to 50. Then you had to flip sides and argue for what you just argued against. And it makes you see things differently. And that's what I'm saying about Black history. Crack open a book, read about it. As the, as the, one of the most famous Black people in the City of Douglas, Hawk. Don't talk about it, be about it.
That was all I'm saying.
At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm glad you said that about Black, I mean, teaching your children history. My great-great-grandfather and Commissioner Pearson's great-grandfather established a school in Ambrose, Georgia, which was called Hawk School.
I know that. I like that name. Anything got that name on it, I know a little bit about it.
Yes.
And who was that? Was the Wilkinson guy that had the bus? Did y'all know that? There was, I think it was a Wilkinson guy that had a bus that went around and picked up the children.
Picked up the kids. I heard about it.
My great-great-grandfather was named William Billy Hawk Senior.
You got a little bit in you.
They called him Goldmouth.
They called him Goldmouth Billy. He gave out land to all of his children.
But he gave the land for the Hawk School.
Yep, sure did. Out there by St. James Baptist Church.
We're good?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think that was Mr. Michael Hane.
Was Michael Hane?
I believe it was.
It was Michael Hane?
Yes. When he picked up the kids. Let me say this, Mr. Mayor, because you mentioned a point that I had forgotten about, you know, talking about Black history, when you mentioned about the NAACP. Let me first of all say, if you are a member or like to become a member, please do so. But the Coffee County NAACP is currently on the reorganization. Mr. Hal Questley resigned because of his health. So on March the 14th, I believe it is, I'm not sure of the date. But anyway, there's gonna be an election here for all of the vacant offices or whatever. So for more information, you can contact Mr. Terry Oates, who is serving as the president now. But also, when you spoke about the NAACP and Mr. Roper, it was actually.
There was seven of them.
And four were former Commissioner Roper, Reverend Woodrow Gaskin, Ms. Clara Jackie Allen, my mother, Mrs. Glass-Cole, and a few more. Mr. Frank Jackson was involved, Mr. Harrow was involved. But anyway, when they went and had, they actually had to sue, I think, the city, if I'm correct, Mr. City Attorney. How did that work so that, because at that time, I think no Blacks were being elected, but the lines had to be redrawn. And when they were, that's when Commissioner Elijah Harrow was able to be the first Black elected to the city.
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to thank you for mentioning NAACP.
Right. But we adjourned, we adjourned the meeting, then we just have a utility. Recede. All right. At this time, we're gonna take a quick recess, and we'll do it again in 10 minutes. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.